Evening and welcome to the October 6, 2020 Glen County Mainland Planning Commission Meeting. If you would like, please join us for the invocation and pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for your presence this night. We ask God for civility. We ask for patience. We ask for wisdom. We ask God that you be glorified in all that's said and done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you'll bear with me for a minute here, I'll go through the meeting procedures. The planning staff affairs the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning manners and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearing comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a minimum five minutes allocated each speaker.
A maximum, sorry.
Maximum, excuse me, maximum five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are limited to relative information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to represent your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman may terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. And before we get started, Commissioner Edgy would like me to let you know that he regrets not being able to be here tonight. As most of you or some of you know, he lives out there, and he very much wanted to be here this evening, but he had a business emergency that he had to be out of town immediately, so he sends his apologies, and he's with you here in spirit. Having said that, item number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting held September 1, 2020, subject to any necessary corrections.
Chairman, I so move.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Public hearing, zoning decision, ZM 4480 Oak Grove Townhomes. Request to rezone a portion of parcel 03-07459, 33.7 acres, parcel 03-16482, 2.14 acres, and parcel 03-13206.51 acres from the medium residential zoning district to planned development district. The applicant is proposing to create a PD district that is generally based on the requirements and land use development standards of the min- excuse me, minimum recre- recreation residential zoning district. The applicant is also proposing to increase the limit on the number of dwellings limited allowed in the area of rezoning from 122 dwellings units to 130 zoning units. Jonathan Roberts, agent for Bud Myrick, Oak Grove Islands Limited LLP owner. Mr. Postal.
Chairman Strickland, Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before I get to my presentation, I'd like to bring up a couple of corrections in the staff report. In the noticing requirements on page one, it stated that we sent out the neighbor letters on September 18, 2019. We're not that well prepared. It was actually September 18 of this year. And finding number five on page three was incorrectly stated that the companion future land use application would be heard at the MPC meeting on November 3. There is no MPC meeting on November 3, although it did say that on the online county calendar, you had changed the meeting to November 10 to avoid conflicts with election night. So that companion future land use application will be heard by the MPC at the November 10 meeting and then the December 3 Board of Commissioners meeting. And then tonight's rezoning action will still be heard at the November 5 Board of Commissioners meeting, as stated. This is the map of the area of rezoning. These areas marked MR, which is the area that was rezoned back in February, which you had heard in January. Here they are. And as stated at the meetings earlier in the year, the Marina Dock actually is an entirely separate tax parcel and zoning district, so it's not directly affected by the rezoning back then and the rezoning now. Background on this project, the original zoning back in February was the same 36.43 acre site. And prior to the February 6 BOC approval, this area was within the Oak Grove Island Plantation Plan Development. And the land use plan for the Oak Grove Island Plan Development would have allowed 100-unit apartment complex, 209 townhome units, a 200-room hotel, a grocery store, shops, and other unspecified general commercial uses within this 36.43 acre site. The site was rezoned from the Oak Grove Island Plan Development to the medium residential zoning district with conditions by the Board of Commissioners on February 2. And these are the four conditions that the Board of Commissioners added. The applicant will submit a traffic study before they apply for the preliminary plat. The alignment of a proposed duplex structure near 162 Riverwalk Drive will be aligned away from that house. Of course, the restriction on dwelling units to 122, and then a restriction on medium residential permitted uses to single-family dwellings, duplexes, and townhomes. Section 3. C. 5 of the PD generally incorporates these conditions, except the applicant is proposing to say that the traffic study will be provided to the county after the preliminary plat is approved. And of course, on the concept plan that you've that you're seeing tonight, it's not a duplex structure near 162 Riverwalk Drive anymore. It's a single-family home. Of course, they're increasing the number of dwelling units to 130. And then this last condition becomes redundant because there are specific permitted uses listed in the PD text. And this was a concept plan that was with the rezoning approved back in February. There was going to be one single-family home, 2,250 square feet. There were going to be 26 duplex dwelling units from 1,650 to 1,800 square feet, and there were going to be 95 townhome dwellings in three-to-five unit buildings. And those range from 1,650 to 2,250 square feet, and that was the total of 122 dwelling units. Tonight's concept plan goes from one single-family home to 30 single-family homes, and all the single-family homes will be 3,000 square feet, 78 duplex dwelling units from 1,755 to 2,025 square feet, and then there'll be 22 townhome dwelling units in three-to-four unit buildings. And those townhomes will range in size from 1,650 to 2,250 square feet for a total of 130 dwelling units. And to get in the increased number of single-family homes, the applicant is proposing to reduce the size, the lot size and lot width of duplexes. Under its current MR zoning, each side of the duplex has to have a minimum lot width of 60 feet and a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. That's the exact same requirements as for a single-family home. The applicant's proposing to have a minimum lot width of 25 feet and a minimum lot area of 2,000 square feet for each side of the duplex. And the other permitted uses within the PD are, of course, the single-family homes, which have the standard 60-foot lot width and 6,000-square-foot minimum lot area; townhomes, which under MR zoning have the 16-foot lot width and 2,000-square-foot minimum lot area; and then, of course, customary home occupations and neighborhood amenities like any other residential neighborhood, and the marina. But as noted before, almost all of the marinas in a different zoning district. And your possible actions tonight are recommend approval to the board, recommend approval with conditions, defer the action, or to recommend denial. And the county is recommending approval. And the property owner and the property owner's agent are here tonight and can answer questions.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Nope. All right. Would the applicant come forward and request action, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts, and we appreciate your time tonight and request action on this this project. But to give a little bit of explanation on why we're here, we were here not long ago, and many in the room are wondering, you know, why are we back? So the development team has done a market study on the on the project and is ready to move forward. And what we found is that more of a cottage-like development is more marketable. The original design, Maurice, if we can pull up the original concept. The original concept proposed a lot of three- and four- and five-building townhomes, so it would be a lot more multi-family feel to the development. And so what the development team has determined is that more of a cottage-like feel will be better at selling the development. Oak Grove is a lot of single-family homes, we believe, adding in. So this is the original development. And you can see the multicolored, each building that has multicolors is a multi-unit townhome building. And so as you come in, the main, it's basically two separate parcels with two different entrances. But if you look at the parcel on the right, that's got an entrance to the top right of the screen. And as you come in, there are multiple three- and four-unit buildings as you approach into the development. And then the entirety of that tract is three and four. It's actually got one single-family, a couple of duplexes, and then the rest of it's three- and four-unit buildings. Just feels very multi-family. And so as the development team was reviewing it, we said, well, maybe we can make it a lot more two-unit structures, and maybe we can add a lot more patio homes. So the new concept is this plan that's coming up now. And see, it's got a lot more single-family patio homes as you approach. At the top right, each red building is a single, single-family patio home. And then we obviously want to have a lot of views along the marsh, so we've got duplexes along the river. And we want those lots to be narrower than a standard duplex lot, but they're still going to be bigger than a normal townhome lot, which was the original proposal all along the river. And so for that, that's the reason we're here. When we started looking into the details and the legal teams were looking at, well, what was allowed by the original MR zoning, that configuration for those duplex lots is not allowed, or at least it's gray. It's not clearly allowed. And the development team wants to make sure that what we're proposing is 100% clearly allowed by the rules. So that's why we're here tonight. And then a couple of other considerations. COVID has made the economic times more uncertain. The eight additional units make the pro forma work a lot better, and it gives the developers a little bit more comfort going into something that could be deemed in the COVID environment as a little bit more questionable. That's why we added that. And then we added three, a couple of other things to the uses that we thought was really important. One, the marina is not on this parcel, but there's an existing marina that everyone at Oak Grove loves and wants to make sure that it's continued to be used by the entire neighborhood. The county's position is that that's a separate parcel, but in the zoning that's on the table that was approved months ago, it doesn't allow a marina. They say it doesn't matter because it's not within this parcel, but we want to make 100% certain marina is an ongoing use that is clearly in the zoning for the property. Also, the amenities, there's a yacht club and an amenity center. Actually, each parcel will have its own amenity. There's an existing yacht club that's proposed to be rebuilt on the left side, and that's written in in the amenity center. There's actually going to be a really cool amenity center on the right side. There's a hammock that overlooks the marsh, and you can see about two miles to the south, and they're proposing a pool and an amenity there on that really pretty piece of property. So those are a couple of benefits that just clarify that the amenities and the marina are clearly allowable in the zoning. So I've heard some rumblings of a bait-and-switch, not a bait-and-switch. We came last time with the intent of doing that other development with a lot of three- and four-unit buildings. Market study suggested probably more appropriate for a lot of one-unit and two-unit buildings. And so I appreciate your time tonight and happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
Are you proposing to add any other one, another one, or just the existing?
Just the existing one. We'd like to add more slips onto the existing one. And then there's a proposed plan to add some fee simple owned docks to the south parcel, and that will be separate permitting with the DNR. And we've started that process in the beginning stages, but it'll be up to the DNR whether we get that permission. It'd be a nice amenity, but it wouldn't be a deal killer for the project.
Okay, so it's just the existing marina. There's not going to be another added one?
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Not a question, but maybe some clarification on the zoning. And one of it's under item three, proposed uses and other requirements. Item C, other requirements as far as the minimum side yard. If it mentions seven-foot side yard, but it's in the design standards, but also to have, on a double frontage lot, the adjacent right-of-way would be 10 feet or half the frontage would, putting 10-foot for the, on a side street for the side.
We'd be glad to do that, absolutely.
And then the other item was under C. 5, conditions. It said, well, under C, under 3A, it had permitted uses and mentioned them all. And then under 5, it had conditions, and it mentions that permitted uses allowed in rezoning shall be restricted to single-family dwellings and townhouses. And just strike that, just have the permitted uses as defined in the beginning of that section.
Yeah, we would be agreeable.
For clarity.
Yeah, we would be agreeable to strike that item D.
Okay. Otherwise, really defining the townhome units, I guess, or the two-unit townhomes? And really, that's what you're looking for is a two-unit townhome?
That's basically it. And those are referred to in the PD now as duplexes. And but that's essentially what it is. It's a two-unit townhome. And the lot size that we're proposing for those duplexes is a little bit wider than the than the townhome width, and it's the same square footage.
Okay. And adding the marina and the pool amenities there also. Right. I was concerned about that, that somebody might
Right.
pick it up later and have their attorney say, well, no, that's not a part
Right.
of what you can do out there. Okay. Very good. That's all I have.
I have one question. You're calling this the Oak Grove Island Townhome Plan Development.
Well, and that's just the name, this concept plan. The developer will likely come up with a much more marketable name than that once the project gets submitted. So any ideas we're certainly up for for hearing.
It's really not about the name. The question is, is it will, is it going to be part of the Oak Grove Island, current Oak Grove Island Homeowners Association, or will it be a separate association?
My understanding is that it will take part in a lot of the maintenance for the Oak Grove Island Homeowners Association, because they've got a lot of infrastructure that has to be upkept. It'll contribute to that, and then it'll have a, and it'll have safeguards to allow all Oak Grove Island residents to use the marina and the yacht club. And then it will also have its own association for this development by itself.
Okay, one more question. And I might as well just talk about the elephant in the room. Can you address the traffic study?
Yeah, happy to provide the traffic study at whichever point that you want. We've already got it done. And we've had talks with the Glen County Traffic Engineer, and it all looks very positive. So whatever point you guys want that to be submitted, happy to submit.
Well, I knew you were asking to do it later. I just was, you know, I just was curious why it's being held in secret, perhaps?
No, it's not. And we're happy to submit. We've already paid for it. The real reason, I'd like to be able to move forward with the preliminary plat reviews by the county concurrently while the traffic engineer and the county engineer review that traffic study. But we've already looked at it informally together, so that's really not a big issue to us.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? All right, Mr. Roberts, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. All those that would like to speak in support of this application, please come up and state your name at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Puett, and I'm a resident of Oak Grove Island. I like the idea. We have a lot of older homeowners out there, and I think that this would be less maintenance for them. We have a lot of homeowners that cut their own yards, and this way they can take life a little easier. I like the townhome patio home idea. I think that's a plus. And I just want to let you know that I'm for it. I think it's very positive.
All right, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in support of this application?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Greg Wilks. I actually live about 50 yards from where this planned community is. And normally, that would seem like potentially a negative thing, and I'm actually very much in favor of it for multiple reasons. First of all, First of all, I've been there almost 20 years. And we knew that there was so much more that could be there based on the original zoning. And so this being a much more detailed limitation of the zoning is very acceptable to me. And then, quite frankly, about four months ago, I lost my father-in-law. And we now have a mother-in-law, my mother-in-law, we're trying to figure out how to take care of her. And this is a potential option for some of our family members and some of the older people that want to move into the area, that this would be a good option for them. And I think it's going to be a good addition for Oak Grove.
Good evening. My name is Mike Sisk, another resident of Oak Grove Island. Just like both Jeanette and this gentleman, Mr. Wilks, mentioned, seniors coming into the neighborhood, my in-laws that are out on St. Simons, they're very enthusiastic about this development, should it come to fruition. They're, you know, getting up in age and looking for that more relaxed environment to where they don't have to do the yard work and can have a, I like the concept of the patio homes now much more than the, you know, larger 3- or 4- or 5- townhome unit concept. Having known the developer's reputation and seen his work as well, I think that it will do nothing but enhance the property values of Oak Grove Island. Yes, there'll be a little bit more traffic, obviously. But knowing the quality of work that he's done at other areas where he's developed, I think it'll be very, very beneficial for Oak Grove Island as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak in support?
My name's Frank Porto, and I too live out there. We've been out there about 10 years. And, you know, I've seen this plan with the Maricks since the inception here. And I do like the idea of going more to the patio-type homes rather than more of the townhomes. And especially securing the use of the dock area for the residents there. I believe it'll enhance the property values as well. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in support of this application? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this application, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
No one else wants to?
You're lucky, Mr. Smith. I was just about to call it to an end.
I'm Julian Smith, and I live on St. Simons Island. As you know, I spoke to this issue some months ago. And there is an element of bait and switch, though there's been a switch. When I called it a bait and switch operation or plan many months ago, what I meant was Oak Grove Island was marketed first as a place of fairly good-sized lots and large houses. And, but lurking in the background was the possibility of hotel, all those condos and so on, many more units. Now, the switch is a good one. I compliment the applicant for being more realistic about the demand. Back in the 1980s, when this was first thought up, there was not sufficient demand. So, thank goodness, there wasn't. And a real mess was not developed out there. So, I have a few comments about the staff report. The first finding, whether the zoning decision will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The staff report basically says it is suitable. And I think it is obviously not suitable in view of the current use. But moving on. Item finding number two, whether the zoning decision will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. As I said, the original zoning was grotesque. And that original PD should not have been adopted. But that's not your problem, it's not your fault. There is going to be, I think, a significant impact. There's going to be, of course, the traffic during construction. There's going to be a lot more traffic coming in if this is built to, if it's built out. Let us hope that it won't be built out. On page three, item four, whether the zoning decision will result in a use which will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets. Yep, there will be. But the staff report does not say there will be. And you should know there is going to be a burdensome problem out there during the construction and if this is built out fully. And then number five, whether the zoning decision is in conformity with the policy and intent of the comprehensive land use plan. No, it's not, of course it's not. And they're going to ask for a change. Now, I think the new FLUM, Future Land Use Plan, is full of mistakes. And the biggest mistake was the planning commissions were not asked to weigh in in detail on what was being planned. And let me go now end with item six. Whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property which gives supporting grounds for approval or disapproval of the zoning decision. Now, the staff say none have been identified. The staff said none have been identified earlier this year. I pointed that out. The staff has not bothered to identify. None have been identified. The use of the weak passive voice, where no agent is identified. We're not told who has failed or who has tried to identify. That is a sure sign that something does not pass the smell test. Now, what is being proposed might be very fine. It might work, it might be wonderful. But what I'm really getting at is the staff report does not give you as much help as it should. And I suspect the staff could have done a better job of suggesting to the applicant that there might be some significant changes to what is proposed. Yes, this is better than the original plan, but it's not too good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none.
My name is Steve Dawson. I live on Oak Grove, wife and I. And this is not an opposition. I'm not in favor, and I'm not opposed. So I'm somewhere in between. I don't see enough information. The detail is lacking, as far as specifics, in my opinion, as to preserving, number one, the beautiful live oaks that are there. What I've seen there, I know the property very well. And there are over 50 live oaks that are over 100 years old. And I see nothing in the plan that works around those. And that's not right, in my opinion. We are stewards of the land. We should take care of our precious live oaks. You can call me a tree hugger, and I'll plead guilty. But without that, I could oppose, but I choose not to ask you for more specific details. Secondly, when Bud, my dear friend Bud, did this a number of years ago, he did offer the residents of Oak Grove the opportunity of right of first refusal. And I think that is in order because the wife and I, we'd like to buy six units of the patio homes for our golf package. We also own the golf course there. And that would be very important. And I would like that to be kind of an understanding. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to come forward and speak in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none. This public hearing is closed.
I'd like to ask Mr. Roberts to address the tree issue that Mr. Dawson brought up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would agree with Mr. Dawson. Those trees are a treasure for that site. And those along the golf course in particular, they're really some pretty specimen trees. And that concept that you see, he's right in a way. It doesn't have a lot of detail. But we are working on the detailed engineering plans. And we've gotten every tree identified on the property. And we've even made some modifications on the road to go around some of the best trees. And where the patio homes will get built, some of the trees will come out. But our intent would be to keep those beautiful trees on the golf course side of that. And then anywhere we can along the road, make medians and go around it, we will. Each of those trees is worth so much, and it will add value to the development. It will make it much more attractive. We don't want to take down any trees that we don't have to. Some will have, I mean, a lot of trees will have to come down for the development. There's no doubt about it. But we will do everything we can to save as many trees as we can.
Any other questions for Mr. Roberts? I'll call a motion.
I recommend approval of the proposed zoning decision as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to just recommend the two items that I'd mentioned earlier. And that was adding to minimum side yards, 10-foot when a budding side streets. And then deleting, under Section 3, Item C., Number 5D, the permitted uses, which is a repeat, a limited repeat of what was mentioned earlier.
Okay. Mr. Roberts, you got that? Okay, Maurice? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval, signify by raising your right hand.
One abstention. Who abstained?
Five yeses and one abstention. Very good. All right, Commissioners. Meeting's adjourned.